Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I now call our November tenth, twenty twenty five Mayor and City Council Work Session to order at five P M. Today, we have one item to review and discuss. We have ordinance number two zero five two. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Laurel City Code. Chapter eleven, Planning and Development. Article three Affordable Housing Program. Section eleven dash fifty-three. For sale affordable housing to update and supplement the for sale housing requirements. And providing an effective date. To provide us with background about this proposed ordinance, we have Deputy Director Monte Burrow. And Legal Counsel Mister Larry Tob. You both now have the floor. Thank you.
Monte, are you gonna begin, or do you want me to just jump in?
I think you.
Yes, Larry, I'm sorry. I'm getting everywhere. You can go ahead and jump in, Larry.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Members of the council, Mayor Sidner. Good to see you all again. As the President Clark just indicated. We have drafted. A ordinance and actually amended an existing section of the Laurel City Code. To really expand upon. The requirements. And the details with regard to the Affordable For Sale Housing Program in the city. And you'll see that in ordinance number two oh five two. That is in front of you. Among other things, what we've done now is provided for a. A lesser number of housing units in a given development to trigger requirement of affordable housing. We have dealt with issues of the pricing. And the affordability issue. We have dealt with. Other issues involving this, and I want to just say right from the beginning that. This is a very complicated issue. This is what I believe to be a significant improvement over the. The requirements that we've had currently in the ordinance. But I think it's fair to say that. This is, in a sense, kind of a work in progress. We will see how this goes. Once we initiate this program. And it's very possible that in the future, it may be amended again. This is the type of thing where I think we can all wait and see how this works out. And what I've done, just so you understand, is I've looked at quite a number of other similar ordinances in other local jurisdictions. I have gone to Montgomery County. Within Montgomery County, the city of Rockville, city of Gaithersburg. I've looked at Loudon County, city of Falls Church. Looked at Howard County. And I've tried to model this in many ways for those programs, which appeared to have been fairly successful. But there certainly may be other issues that may arise as we go. And I just want you to understand that. This is kind of our first take at this, and I think it's, as I said, I think it's much more comprehensive than the ordinance that we had, or we have currently. But we'll wait and see how this all works out and certainly may seek to amend it in the future based on the city's experience. So really with that, I'll. I assume you've all read the ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mister Tob. Deputy Director Monte Burrow, do you have any input as well? Before we proceed with any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions from the council or comments? I see a council member, James Cole's hand. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Mister Tob, I really like what you and the department have worked on on this. It really cleans up a lot of what we previously passed. I did have a question on subsection B when it comes to. Who would be eligible for the affordable dwelling units? Previously, we had adopted this at no more than sixty percent, and it's now currently being proposed. At median household incomes of thirty to sixty percent of the area median income. Why is it going to ninety percent?
I guess I have to defer to the mayor on that, because I think that was his recommendation on that, and I. I apologize.
We want to give people more opportunities to apply for someone making like maybe the medium income of Prince George's County, we went to thirty ninety percent. That we're at sixty percent, that would, we got more people can be in the pool. So someone making fifty thousand can qualify for a house. Or up to a certain amount, you know, we have the scale. I can pull the scale up. The scale will tell you based on the Prince George's County. Medium income from thirty percent. To sixty percent, but we're going to ninety percent. So there's a bracket. I think it goes from like, don't quote me though, from like maybe fifty thousand to eighty or ninety thousand in that bracket like that.
If we could send that over, I just did some searching online, and it said that. Ninety percent of area median income for Prince George's County in Laurel. For a family of two would be about ninety-five thousand. Which I thought might be a bit high.
Well, you can start off at thirty percent as well. We just.
My concern is what's gonna keep someone from selling the house to the people on the higher end and not giving it to the people on the lower end?
But on a certain percentage of them gonna be sold to those that income bracket, you know, so it's on a certain number of houses. And the house would be there forever when it would be recorded. So when they sell the house, it goes back into that pool. So, you know. So it's a rotating thing. So, you know, so this first set of house for ten years, and they sell it. They're gonna sell it back to someone in that average medium income. So when the title company. Review that process, they know they're gonna sell it to someone in that average income. I think that's the. Best way to do it. Sixty percent, we thought, was limit with. With limited pool. So this will expand the pool. Someone making a lesser salary. To a maximum salary.
Okay. If you could send over that scale, that would be great.
Sure. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. I see Councilmember Adrian Simmons handout. Please feel free to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I was seeing likewise that the PG County average median income. For twenty twenty-five was one hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. I think ninety percent of that would be one hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred ten. That's for a family of four. If it was for a family of two, it'd be something like a hundred and six thousand. So it seems to me. If by widening this bracket. Somebody making something like, you know, a hundred thousand to a hundred forty-five thousand. You know, qualifies for this affordable home, which. Does seem, certainly does widen the pool. But I guess the question in my mind is, is the pool, though, still? For people who were really intending to try to make this affordable for. And perhaps, you know, this may be a policy conversation to have, but. For us to continue to pick up on, I know. We just saw this a couple of days ago, so we haven't had a chance to really talk further on it, but. Just to short share that note, there's a couple of other items I sort of wanted to noted as well. The. Some of the language there and sort of, I guess that is. The section eleven dash fifty-three, paragraph A. And thank you, Mister Tob, I believe, as you replied to me just a little earlier before the meeting around. I read the opening sentence there a few times, trying to make sense of what it was saying, but I believe I understand to say. It's twenty units, either in single-family developments, townhome developments, condo developments. Or mixed-use developments that contain residential units, I think is the goal there. I think we might, there's probably a way to streamline that just a bit, but I think that's what you're, what the intent of the phraseology is. Which makes sense with that. That context. See, pardon me as I flip through my notes here. And I noticed also, you know, we entered the floor of the thirty percent, and as your reply indicated, part of our goal is to ensure that somebody doesn't find themselves. Buying a unit that doesn't make sense based on the level of income. So the thirty percent of average median income is intended to sort of set a floor there. So I'm just scrolling through my notes here. Let's skip over a couple of these items. I think we did see in paragraph I, there was just a little. Little typo to remove there, the beginning of that.
That was unintentional, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. And then. And then I think also in paragraph. I, in cross-referencing to paragraph K, there was a question of, and this maybe goes to a topic we mentioned earlier, is. The sale of the house at a future date. The original paragraph says that it retains. That is to say, paragraph I says that those affordable units shall remain in perpetuity. But paragraph K says for a period of thirty years. I think from your clarification, the intent was to make it for thirty-year period. One point that should probably be further defined, I would recommend, is what happens fifteen years from now or twenty years from now? If the person who originally purchased the affordable unit wants to sell that unit fifteen years from now. Are they restricted to their original purchase price? Or is there an ability to sort of increase over time? I think your notes back to me indicated some jurisdictions, you know, may allow for an annual increase, maybe based on inflation or something that says, all right. Twenty years from now, you're not restricted to the twenty-year-ago price. So I think that's probably be wise to incorporate some of that language. That would be a recommendation. From my end. Let me check one other note here. And in paragraph K four, which is the clause about limiting the refinance to twenty-five percent above what was currently borrowed. And I think there was some wisdom there to ensure somebody doesn't sort of borrow all the way up to the full market value, end up burdening themselves from a debt standpoint and not being able to. To sort of service that debt. I wonder if there may, instead of being twenty-five percent of the original value, it could actually be up to the amount of the original loan. So again, I'm imagining somebody that's twenty years into their loan. They want to do a cash-out refi, perhaps to do some repairs. But they're sitting at, I don't know, I want to make up a number, a ten-thousand-dollar mortgage balance at that point in time. You know. Whereas they had originally purchased the property a hundred fifty thousand. That perhaps it makes sense to say, hey, you can borrow up to the original mortgage as opposed to. A percent of the present-day mortgage at the time of loan application. I think that may also be. A prudent modification to that, to that clause.
So you're suggesting it be to the market value at the time of the refinancing application?
No, up to the original loan amount. So they would have bought it at a discounted value, and I think in here, there's the example of a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollar purchase price and a five-hundred thousand dollar unit. So assuming they. Did a normal twenty percent down payment, you know, that's a hundred fifty thousand times eighty thousand. You know, they would have borrowed. A hundred and twenty thousand, perhaps, at the time of purchase. Maybe they paid down that hundred twenty thousand over the life of the mortgage. It's sitting at sixty, I'll say. But they could refinance back up to that amount as opposed to twenty-five percent of the present-day mortgage accounts.
Okay.
One last question. I know you mentioned you had consulted some of the other jurisdictions, affordable housing. So maybe two questions. One is, how does their adjusted median income range compare to what's proposed here?
It seems very consistent. Most of them seem to be in the area of thirty percent to eighty percent, somewhere in there. That seems to be the general range I've seen, and it seemed to be. So I think where we are, at least what I'm proposing, is fairly consistent with other jurisdictions in the area.
Sure. So you would say most of the jurisdictions have a high watermark around the eighty percent? Or is it just some of a limited number that reached the eighty percent, or most of them are at the eighty percent?
I mean, I can't say most or not, because I haven't, you know, looked at all of them here, but. What I've seen in the number of jurisdictions that I've looked at, they all seem to be somewhere in that range. I mean. The thirty to eighty just seems to be. Kind of where everybody seems to be in that. Some are thirty to seventy, some are thirty to eighty. I haven't seen anything lower or higher than thirty as a minimum.
Sure, that makes sense based on the math.
And I, and I haven't, I haven't seen too many. It seems to be generally seventy to eighty percent for maximum is the general range, seems, seems to be from what I've seen so far.
Gotcha. And then secondary, keeping with that comparative, are there any other? Either provisions of other jurisdictions that, you know, perhaps we don't have or different than ours and sort of. What has their experience been for those who have had affordable housing that maybe we can learn from any sort of perspective on that?
Couple of things. First of all, one thing I neglected to indicate at the beginning, and that is that one thing I. Unfortunately neglected to put in, which I would like to put in, is a provision that would indicate that this can only apply to first-time homebuyers. And that's an important element, and my apologies for neglecting to put that in, but I'd like to add that in before the, this is adopted. Because I do think that's the intent. And that's what we should be. So that's one thing. With regard to your last question about. Other issues. You know, it's interesting. In Montgomery County, for example. They have such a, it's a very, very complex program they've set up. And what they actually do is they buy units. And then people have to apply for these units, and they will sell them. And, you know, if you meet certain criteria. It's very, very complicated. It is far beyond what I think the city could do, given its bureaucracy that we have here. They've got an entire department, you know, for this purpose, so it's a very different program there. But in most of the others, it's, they seem to be somewhat similar to this. And one, some of them put in a density bonus. They've added a situation where if you provide, I think it's. You can get a density bonus if you provide a certain number over and above what you're required to do, then you can get an additional density kick. On the entire development. But that may be something you want to look at in the future and sort of see how this goes first. And then see if it's rolling, then, then, you know, doing well. Then maybe somebody consider.
And just so I understand, that density bonus is the idea being if the population density is a certain level within the area. You are allowed to have more, or how does that?
No, no, I'm sorry, let me explain. In any given development, there's a certain maximum density. Let's say, you know, you have two units breaker, five units breaker, whatever it is. In those situations, if you provide a greater number of affordable homes over and above what you're required to do. Then you could also get a constant, a similar kick in the overall density of your, of the development.
Gotcha. Okay, I follow. Yeah, thank you, thank you. The last one, it was a new question, and you're the floor. Thank you, Madam President. Is it? I think I've heard that at this point with the developments that we have in the pipeline, and have already been approved, that there. May not be that much if any real estate remaining is the, I don't know if that is a true statement on my part, and if so, is the intent of the modifications here really to. Reflect redevelopment, or excuse me, affect redevelopment or expansion, or. I don't know if you know the answer to that question, or?
You know, that's really more of a policy issue, I think. But I think it's, I mean, it is true that the city does not have. You know, a lot of vacant property at this point for additional development, but, I mean, the city could annex property in the future, that certainly could. Add to this, but it really is more of a policy issue than a legal issue.
Got you. No, okay, that's helpful. So, yeah, it's more for like a redevelopment and/or if we annex additional property, there isn't. To our understanding, there isn't that many more places this could affect even at twenty units.
I would say this, that is that if there's a redevelopment. And it's, you're completely redoing things. It's not just a matter of upgrading existing homes. Then I think it would apply. I think if you're creating new homes in any fashion, be it something that's on raw land or something, just a redevelopment of existing. Apartments or homes or whatever it would be. I think it would apply.
Yep, I agree. Yep. Thank you, and thank you, Madam President. I'm here at the floor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Simmons. Just wanted to check in, Councilwoman Johnson or Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Do you all have questions and comments as well? Please feel free to proceed, Councilwoman Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just briefly, thank you again, Mister Tob, for all your work in this. So glad to see that we are looking forward to have the affordable housing. Most of the questions came up from the previous council members. I just had a question mainly about. Enforcement. I don't know if it'll be somewhere else, but how will we just make sure? And I know it's all new, and I know. And I like the fact that Mister Tob, he did say this is gonna be a working document. It's gonna change. We're gonna. Follow it, and things are gonna change, and we're gonna make modifications. So I really appreciate that. But is there anywhere else that the enforcement measures are in place, or how will we make sure that developers are doing what they are supposed to do?
Well, I think what, the way it would work is that when any. Developer comes in to either develop a new project or to redevelop a project. It would go before the Department of Economic and Community Development, as it normally would. And it's there, I think that, first of all, I think most developers will pick up on this and they'll provide that. But if not, it's certainly, you've got staff, planning staff here. That will look at the development, and if it's not addressing those issues, they'll make sure that it does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilmember Jeffrey Mills, do you also have a question or comment? No? Okay. I do see Councilmember Cole. Feel free to proceed as well. Thank you.
Just going back to the cap, the range of what would be eligible for this. I would like to see it something lower. I've just been pulling up some numbers, trying to see what the surrounding municipalities are, as Mister Tob had said. Most of them are in the eighty percent range on the high end, including Rockville, Gaithersburg. And Washington DC. Everywhere else is less than eighty percent. Montgomery County, Fairfax, and Loudon are all at seventy percent of area median income for their jurisdictions. So. I would be comfortable moving this forward if we lowered the range maybe to seventy-five for Laurel. On the upper end.
Thank you. Your comment has been noted. The upper end of seventy-five. I don't see any additional hands for comment or questions. Councilmember Cole, just, okay. Thank you. For my, oh, Mayor Sidner, please feel free to proceed.
I'll wait till you finish.
Okay, thank you, sir. For myself, first, thank you, Mister Tob and Deputy Director Burrow. For working on this ordinance and Mayor Sidner and the staff. I think it's great. I did have an opportunity to look up some other jurisdictions, so I appreciate you doing that. Mister Tob, I think it's valuable to understand what's happening in our other municipalities and surrounding areas. I did notice, and just looking through my notes. That cities like Alexandria, I think, as Councilmember Cole mentioned. Like some of their areas are AMI tiers are forty percent, some are sixty, some are eighty. I do also, though, understand the direction that the mayor is attempting to go in to provide affordable housing. I think it's a tricky time. With people, they don't have the ability to afford many places now. Prices have increased since COVID. Everything has become more expensive, so I do kind of understand. And our area is almost comparable to New York City, extremely expensive to live in this area. So I do understand his percentage as well. I did want to ask, if possible, Mister Tob, I heard you say about the first-time homebuyers that you would like to add that. As a clause. Is there a reason why you would prefer that it be your first-time homebuyers only? Just, I'm thinking in the aspect of. People who. May have a different income now. With the new administration after COVID, why we would only restrict it to first-time homebuyers?
Well, it doesn't have to be. That would be really a policy issue, but I've just noticed that. Almost all the other jurisdictions I looked at did have that as a requirement, and I think that was the intent. Was to go ahead and provide this for entry-level homebuyers, and they're trying to bring in more, you know, younger folks, younger families, whatever it would be. Who have, generally speaking, less of an ability to handle home prices as they are now, as we. We all know that they've, how they've just, you know, the, the whole house prices has just accelerated at an amazing rate. And it's really difficult for, for first-time homebuyers to even get into the market. And so I think that, that has been what I've seen, seems to be the intent, is to try to address that issue. And not just those, because, I mean, otherwise, for example, you could have a retired couple. Who could come in and who've been in a house, and we want to downsize, and they might, because they're retired at that point. They might be able to qualify on simply the income basis. But is that really the market that you're trying to attract here for this purpose? You know, it seems to me, again, generally, they're trying to attract first-time homebuyers. You know, who are really trying to get into the housing market and, and otherwise find it very difficult.
Thank you for answering that question. I really appreciate it. My only hesitation is. Let's say that there's a couple, one of them passes away. That individual, their name may have been in a home, but now they're a senior and their income has adjusted. I'm concerned that, you know, they may not qualify for that, and they kind of deserve to have those homes too. And because their income is at a retired level, would they not be eligible for our senior population? So I'm just trying to think of the extremes there. Yes, attracting. The newer generation, but also protecting and helping our seniors as well.
That really is a policy issue for the council to decide. That's, you know, that it's not so much a legal issue. Whatever you all wish to do, we can certainly put language in here. But I think, as I said, just for other jurisdictions, seem to be focusing. On, on younger homebuyers coming, getting into the market, so they, they do have an ability to step up and eventually move up to better housing and things of that nature.
No, thank you. And again, it's helpful because we're able to see what the other jurisdictions are doing. I really would love to be able, just because we promote inclusivity here in the city of Laurel, I would love to be able to expand that. And ensure that our seniors are taken care of, because I know incomes adjust so much. I don't expect anything to get cheaper. And I really don't want to see anyone homeless. Because they can't afford to live somewhere, or their name had already been on a home, that maybe they couldn't afford anymore. If possible.
The only thing I'd suggest, President Clark, is that. You know, a lot of times for people that are retired, they've been in homes for many, many years, and they've got the value, you know, the equity in their homes. And don't have quite the same challenges in terms of even downsizing that other younger homebuyers, you know, new, new homebuyers would have. And just as a point to be considered that, you know, they, a lot of seniors who've been, you know, have been in their homes, they've built up equity. And they've, you know, they've got enough money there to, to downsize if they wish to, to, to a newer home, but a smaller home. It's not, it may not be quite the same thing, but again, I think it's a policy issue.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think I'm thinking in terms of. What I've learned and what I've seen are a lot of people don't have their homes and trusts. And so it gets wrapped up into other things, and they don't have the money to even purchase something new or to afford anything. I just really want to avoid us. Excluding them if possible. If we're able to find a way to include. Newer homebuyers, but also not exclude seniors, that would be wonderful. I do like the idea of the first-time homebuyer, but I just don't want to exclude anyone if possible.
Sure.
Thank you so much. I have a couple more things. Also. I wondered if we could consider an additional tool. I'm not sure if this is something that we already have. That could possibly expand our affordable housing impact. I was extremely interested in exploring the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That could possibly work alongside our inclusionary requirements. I think this would allow developers to build affordable home units. Or dedicate a fund that the city could use strategically for affordable housing initiatives. I think it could also help us address the rental housing gap or the housing gap that we have throughout Maryland. I know our current ordinance, just looking at my notes, focuses on our for-sale housing. I think a trust fund would give us the resources to partner with like nonprofits as we do. To develop affordable housing areas, also some down payment assistance. I know our land may be a little bit nil in the city of Laurel, so it may open that up and support housing rehabilitation. I did have the opportunity to look that Montgomery County has successfully used this model. With their Housing Initiative Fund, which actually generated over two hundred million dollars and created thousands. with their Housing Initiative Fund, which actually generated over $200 million and created thousands of affordable areas. So I just wondered if this could possibly position Laurel as a leader in affordable housing and as a solution that would give us the flexibility to respond to our community's evolving needs. If possible, we could maybe look into a housing trust fund structure and what it would look like for Laurel, including any of their appropriate fee calculations, administration, I'm sorry, administrative requirements. And you could bring back some recommendations for the council to consider. I don't want it to hold up tonight's ordinance by any means, but I do believe that it's worth pursuing as a next step, just to ensure that our residents have quality and affordable housing. That was one thing I would like to mention as well.
I saw the same thing in Montgomery.
Oh, good.
But the difference is there that, if I recall, that applied to any developments that were below the threshold of, I think they're twenty-four units or maybe twenty units. And then the developer wasn't, was required to pay a certain amount into a certain percentage into the Housing Trust Fund. The concern I have in Laurel is that I doubt you're going to find much in the way of that type of thing happening. In other words, there's just so little land for development now. That's not likely to happen. Now, you could certainly develop other revenue sources and maybe that's something worth considering. But again, that's a policy matter for the council to decide. But certainly, it's something that you could certainly consider.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I think, and just a one last thing, and I know that we're speaking of for-sale, but I really would love to see this for rentals. I think our affordable apartments are really needed in this area. I know that, you know, our amounts are pretty high for people to afford. So I don't expect that to happen today, but as you said, this is something that we can constantly look at. Update is needed, but I don't want us to forget about the affordable units for our apartment complexes. Because I know as we have no land, there are some that are not included that perhaps we could include to provide people with affordable housing. And that's all that I have for tonight.
Just one thing, President Clark, and then I believe there is already an affordable rental policy in the city. I think the code provides that. I haven't looked at it in quite a while, so I don't have the details. But I believe it's already in the code and we can certainly look at that as well.
Sorry. Yes, sir, it is. I think, if I remember correctly, there are three units that are on there. One of them happens to be mine, but we have many more apartment complexes throughout the city of Laurel. I would love to see more added if possible. That would be great.
Great.
Thank you so much. Mayor Sidney, you now have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. To answer your last question, the policy is in effect. Evolution is one of the apartments in effect. Westside, Duval, and also Avalon. So those three apartment units are affordable rent. Any apartment built after, I think it was 2019, according to legislation, has to provide so many housing units for rent. So, you know, the key is, is to talk to some of these landlords, department managers, now owners, to see they want to come under that law, you know, that's the key. So that's something that we can probably do. When I first came to mayor, we did a group with all the apartment managers came in. And we can bring that up to them. That's something they choose to do, something not to. But anybody building an apartment after that 2019 has to provide that unit. And I just want to, the question you guys have, great questions, I just want to say, whatever, just put it in legislation. You know, put it in there, you write it up a certain way, and then we all discuss it. You have one legislation, Councilwoman Simmons has one, Councilman Coles. And we'll debate, you know, from that perspective. That way we can look at all four pieces of legislation. That's your job. It's a policymaker. You guys can write it the way you want to write it. I'll just say that I'll make suggestions. This is the first time we're doing this. We want to have a developer. Poty is the first developer who agreed to this. And we're changing the policy now to something I initiated when I was a council member, because we're always talking about rent, right? So let's give people opportunity to buy homes. And the whole goal was for those first-year schoolteachers, those first-year police officers, those individuals making fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year on their entry-level jobs can buy a home. And that was the whole purpose of it. And so, right, it's a work in progress. But I just want us to maintain that we can, as legislators, you can add and take away all the way you want to. But I just want to be able to get this off the ground. When developers come and see Laurel, they say, okay, wow, this is a good policy. I want to develop inside the city of Laurel. So I want to keep that in consideration as well. But the whole goal is to get those individuals that work in Laurel, live in Laurel, especially our police officers, our schoolteachers, things of that nature. But it's open for anybody. I'm not saying, I'm saying it seems good as well. But just keep that in mind, that we want to have a policy, we create it and write something, that the developer wants to buy into it. We don't want to make it so complicated they want to buy into it, like, you know. We get it, we want to take everybody, but we at least want to get something off the ground that we can use and have a model and then go from there as we move on further. Just want to add that piece in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Sidney. One thing that I forgot to mention, I just looked at my list. I did also want to recommend that if we could perhaps put in a small higher percentage or some sort of incentive for our employees, like you said, police officers, people who work for the city so that they can have an incentive to move here, work here, live here, play here, et cetera. I see Councilmember Mills and then Councilmember Cole has their hand up. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make sure my sound is working. Can you hear me? All right. Good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to mention two things as far as the, like, Mr. Taub, you mentioned about, you know, trying to attract the young. But I think that, you know, the city really, it really doesn't matter what type of dollar comes into the city or what age of money comes into the city as long as the city is drawing revenue. So, you know, I was kind of agreeing with what President Clark was saying, you know, as far as the age thing. And the other thing is, right now, we're offering twelve, we have sixty thousand dollars to start, sixty thousand dollars for twelve five thousand dollar new home buyer grants. So by being that that was in the budget, I was thinking that maybe that could be added, we can add that and make it more, you know, add maybe another five thousand. You know, because telling realtors that we have, that we're giving five thousand dollar grants in the city, that was really motivating a lot of realtors to try to find and make sales within the city for their clients. So, you know, so that they can make, that's like an incentive to the real estate agent. Because the more houses they sell, the more money they make. And so it's kind of a win-win. But my suggestion, I would like to add perhaps, you know, another five thousand to that five thousand, making it ten thousand, if possible, in the next budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Cole, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to point out to the council that the clerk did just send us the affordable home AMI scale. Previously, I'd said about seventy-five percent, but looking at the scale, it looks like it goes in equal tens. So increments of ten, so I don't think seventy-five would work there. I would recommend that we change the higher end of the range to seventy percent, which would put the area median income to qualify for it. At seventy percent would be eighty thousand three hundred and eleven for a single-family household or ninety-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four for a two-person household. I think that would be more in line with what a first-time homebuyer or someone looking for affordable housing would need versus some of the other scales that come up to six figures, starting at the ninety percent range. So I would suggest that we edit this to no more than seventy percent, and I'm happy to write that up as the mayor suggested.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Mayor Sidney, feel free to proceed.
Just to follow a question from Councilman Coles, you want to go from thirty to eighty percent or just going to eighty percent AMI?
Thirty to eighty. They have the upper end.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you. Once again, you guys can.
Wrong line.
Okay. Once again, I suggest that each person, whatever you want to write your legislation, write it. You know, and then give it, send it to us and we'll review it again. And we have another work session, a continuing work session that we narrow it down. That way we know how it look on paper based on your recommendations. I think that's the easiest way to do it. Mr. Taub, he's not going to remember everything. I'm not going to remember everything. But if you know what you're saying, you know how you want to see it, then just go ahead, use the model that we have and just add to what you want to see. And then we just go over legislation one, legislation two, legislation three, we chop that down and go from there. I think that's the best way to proceed going forward. Just a suggestion, once again, just a suggestion.
Thank you, Mayor Sidney. Thank you, Councilmember Cole. I think I want to make sure that we, as councilmembers, understand changing it to the AMI, I believe what you're recommending, changing it to seventy, to be no more than seventy percent. Who would that affect, especially with the change? Because I think, Mayor Sidney, you were saying to have it at ninety percent, correct?
That was our original goal, but once again, we, I'm open, it's a policy thing, you know. You guys, legislators, you determine what you think is best. And like I said before, just write it up different ways and we'll go from there. It doesn't, that's just a suggestion, you know, if you want it, we'll try to figure out the best way.
No, thank you. I understand. I want to, I just want to make sure that each councilmember has the proper information in order for them to make an effective decision. I think Councilmember Cole has shared his recommendation of the seventy percent. However, I do want to understand what it would look like if it was at ninety percent. Who would it affect? Who might not be included if it dropped from ninety to seventy? Can the staff, administration, or someone provide us with those details to understand what that looks like so that we can make a better and more informed decision? I can't hear you, City Administrator Polly. You're off mute, but I can't hear you.
Yeah.
I think it might be the service trying to.
I said, if you read your chart, when you get a chance, you'll see the income that in a household, how many people in a household. And I think that answers your question.
Okay, I will take a look at. I think this was just sent while we were in the meeting, so.
It was, yeah, yeah. We sent it because Councilman Coles asked for it and we pulled it up. So this will get answered your questions based on just the most you can make to get one of these houses.
Okay, and he's recommending seventy percent and you originally had ninety. So ninety percent.
He went to eighty. Councilman Coles is eighty percent now. So he's going, thirty to eighty percent.
I was reading the wrong line. I went up to eighty.
Oh, okay, okay.
The lowest is thirty. And the highest, so whoever, you know, that's who can qualify for, based on and the size of people in your household. So that could be a schoolteacher, that could be, you know, employee, you know, as long as they meet that average income, thirty to eighty percent. So.
Okay.
Being a citizen, whoever, you got to meet the average and median income.
All right. I think we'll have to look at this. I, myself, personally, I would prefer the ninety percent after seeing the chart only because of the amount that individuals make here in this area and the additional income that they have. However, I'm always happy to consider it if there's additional information. But at this current time, I will prefer to stick with a ninety percent. I see, I don't know whose hand went up because I was looking at the chart. When you put your hands up, I believe it might have been Councilmember Mills or was it Councilmember Simmons? Councilmember Mills? Okay. Please feel free to proceed. And then right after that, we have Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I think that what Councilmember Cole was mentioning with the seventy percent with just an average of two household member, two household at ninety-one thousand. I mean, like if you do the math with a, just an average salary for Prince George's County schoolteacher, it's around fifty-two to sixty-three thousand. So if you use the sixty-three at a max, and that's like elementary and middle school, high school is a little more, like close to a hundred thousand. So, and that's per, you know, that's per teacher. So, you know, at a minimum of right there in between of fifty-five thousand, you know, that would, that would be close to that, you know, right there for two people at the ninety-one, because, I mean, you kind of, you know, ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars or less, and they can't reach that threshold. But if we have, if we, if we given a ten thousand dollar incentive, you know, because the five thousand dollars is really not going to really help. But if we, if we up for next year, ten thousand, you know, that will kind of push them over, you know, over the limit instead of, because if you have new teachers like Doc, Mr. Taub was mentioning, like right now, my daughter, she's a new teacher. She's, you know, she's young. And so, but she's not making that, that higher scale. So, you know, they have, they have, I think that the seventy percent would probably be a little better just to kind of keep it below. So just to give them that option.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Sorry, Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think I concur with the mayor in that it's probably best for us to sort of look at some of these charts and then come back with the proposed range. I'm a little hesitant to tie too much to that chart we're looking at. It's for the Falls Church area. I'm looking at a set of numbers from HUD for PG County. They're slightly different. So I think our principles of finding the right income level is probably a good one. But in terms of tying that to a step, a percent step, I want to maybe have us refer to a couple of charts because I think the HUD chart for PG County might be slightly different than what we're seeing here for Falls Church. But the concept of, because the other part of that in my mind is the wider we make the pool, the less actually available for folks who are in the lower income levels. And if the goal is to really target somebody who's getting a job and making a first step into homeownership, I hate to see them edged out from somebody making a hundred, hundred forty thousand dollars. So that's just general point there, but the main point I wanted to make was, I don't want us to tie to the percentage listed in these tables we just received. It might be a little different in the end, but I think it does make sense, as the mayor suggests, for us to go back and look at it as we approach a revised version.
Thank you for your recommendation, Councilmember Simmons. So I assume that what we will receive is additional information. We have that chart. But the councilmembers can provide their questions and their comments to the staff members in between this time, as always, to communicate and receive more information. I did look while we were speaking, just because I didn't have an opportunity to look at the chart. It looks as though the moderate income is generally between eighty and one-twenty percent. So I do understand a little bit more why Councilmember Cole may have recommended that now. So we look forward to having more discussions about this, questions. But it sounds as though the council doesn't have any hesitation on moving this forward to our six PM meeting this evening. Okay. I don't see.
Madam President, just to clarify, I do believe we need to revisit and not push it to the first hearing.
I concur with Councilmember Simmons. As I say, you know, you guys got a lot of questions. So once again, I think we can do another work session before our next meeting. And we can do a special work session, I think, as close to the holidays. But once again, please write your legislation up to us, how you see it. And it'd be easier that we can go over each legislation one at a time. You know, Councilman Mills suggests this, legislation one, Councilman Clark, legislation two. And then we can narrow it down and put down the piece we want, have one final piece, and then we take it to the public hearing. So I don't want us to go to the public hearing until we actually talk this out. But we do want to get it, not rushing, but we do have developers coming in and we want to be able to have an ordinance for them to follow when they go to the planning commission, saying this is what they have to do. So I think that hopefully we can get it done before the New Year. I think that's a reasonable amount of time, because, you know, the public hearing in November, then we got another public hearing in December, and you guys can work on it. Why are you waiting for that public hearing in December? I think in December, public hearing, we should have a final piece of legislation that we can have and be good to go. And the developers coming inside our city, the planning commission can have something they can go by, N E C D. So that's my suggestion, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sidney. Thank you, councilmembers. Just keeping in mind that there is a holiday, so if we'll need to work on this during the holiday season, it's not going to be rushed, but it may be a little intense, as long as you all are comfortable with that. All right, perfect. Okay, so it sounds as though what we'll do is hold off on ordinance number two zero five two. We will remove it from our agenda for this evening at six PM and we will only have number seven and eight to discuss and work on. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Taub and Deputy Director Monte Burrow for working on this. We look forward to discussing this more and having more questions and dialogue. With no further business to come, before the mayor and city council for our work session, I will close out at five forty-eight. I will close out at five forty-eight and look forward to seeing you at six PM for our next meeting. Have a great evening.
Thank you.